Are we good?
Right.
Yep.
All right, calling the June 26th Mashpee Public Schools School Committee Business Meeting to Order at 5:32. Let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the pride of the United States of America. We are very proud of our religious saints, one nation under God, and the business of liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first order of business is to ratify the agenda of June 26th, that's tonight's. Okay, all right, so I just need a motion.
To move.
Who was that, George?
Yep.
Second.
It was just, second by Chris. Any discussion? All right, George?
Yes.
Yes.
Done.
Oh, yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so that's unanimous. The next item is approval of minutes from May 8th, May 15th, and June 5th, pages 1 to 7 of the packet.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by George.
So, motion to approve all, and what are we doing, one at a time?
We have to do one at a time.
One at a time.
Move to approve meeting, minute meetings of April 3rd.
No, we don't have April 3rd.
No, no.
I'm sorry, May 8th.
May 8th. Oh, I see what you said there. Anyone second that?
I will second.
Any discussion on the May 8th, motion to approve the May 8th minutes? Okay, George, how do you vote?
Yes.
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 Jeff?
Motion to approve the minutes of the meeting of May 15th.
Second.
Okay, George made the motion, Chris seconded. Any discussion of the May 15th minutes? Okay, none?
No.
All right, George, how do you vote?
Yes, I abstain.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Yes. So, one abstention, four yeses.
Motion to approve the minutes from the June 5th, 2019 meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Was that second by George?
George did.
Okay, all right, any discussion of the June 5th minutes?
So, the minutes fail to recognize that we had a meeting with the tribe before the start?
No, I think we have two minutes here.
Is that a second one? At the fifth.
They're both on the fifth.
Six.
One says special meeting page five of the packet.
Yeah, right now. So we got it.
Hold on. Okay, got it. Okay.
Any discussion on the June 5th minutes?
No.
Okay, hearing none. George, how do you vote?
I abstain.
Yes.
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, all right. Does not appear that we have any public comment, although I don't have the sheet in front of me, doesn't look like we do. Okay.
Yeah, hold on.
Do we have a chairman, I think we have a second.
Well, they, they're.
They're separate.
They're not listed as separate on the agenda.
They're listed as special meeting and business meeting.
The motion was to approve the minutes of June 5th, not.
Yes.
Three.
Okay, so we didn't, oh, all right.
So, both of them were approved through this?
Yes, fine. Okay. All right, so, we good?
Yep.
Okay, next on the agenda is the report of the superintendent.
Okay, so, we have administrator reports that go back to May, so they're not as current as we might like, so there's a few things I might highlight. There's 418 students at the Coombs School, that was through the May report, and just highlighting, the end of the year was very full of events, but one in particular was the second grade Flag Day Concert, which is always very well attended, and the music teacher, Mr. Montgomery, did a great job with all the students. And.
That's a good question. I thought we were gonna, I thought we were gonna see on these reports, the, so we have the percentage of students with the chronic absenteeism that we're tracking, since that's now being tracked by D E S I, I thought we were gonna have a month over month, something that showed a comparison.
For absenteeism?
Yeah.
Or we can do that, we can do a year.
Or a year, or something, yeah, because I don't know if 16% is high, low, better, worse.
Okay. Do that.
Okay. Thanks.
At the Quashnet School, 499 students. I don't know whether we already highlighted this, but the 2019 winner of the spelling bee was sixth grader Ayesha Shafi, second grade was fourth grader James Benner, and third grade was sixth grader Lenny Jean Laguna, and it was quite a competition. This is interesting, I would want to make sure I sort of read this part of the report, so that those in the television audience can hear about. So, the Quashnet School has recently received Board of Health approval to partner with Cape Kid Meals. It's a supplemental food program for students that will begin in the 1920s school year, and Cape Kid Meals is an affiliate of a national food program called Blessings in a Backpack. Quashnet School is currently seeking sponsorships of $150 per student participant, which covers weekly food distributions. The goal is to provide food each weekend throughout the school year and over each school vacation, and so far, the partners that have chosen to be involved with this project are the Barnstable County Sheriff's Department, the Mashpee Police Department, New Seaberry Mashpee Kiwanis Club, and the Mashpee Chamber of Commerce. They've already committed to sponsoring several students. We're working with the Masonic Angels Beehive Food Program to support 10 Quashnet families with supplemental food and household products, and we are receiving two deliveries per month and then distributing supplies to families. The first distribution happened in the month of May. They are using a space in the back of the Quashnet School in the locker room area that was cleaned out when the contractors were here for the renovation project, and it's been painted and organized to store the supplies. It has its own set of double doors out the back, which makes it very convenient for families to pick up, and it also provides privacy. And the organic market in Mashpee Commons is going to partner with providing fresh produce daily, beginning in October, to add to the family supplement program. Many of the districts on the Cape do, are affiliated with the Cape Kid Meals, and this was through a Cape superintendent's meeting that I heard about it, and was like, why isn't Mashpee doing this? And so then she came and met with Mary Kate and Principal LaBelle, and Principal O'Brien was already starting her own version of a food pantry to help some of the needy families who attend Quashnet, so it was a really great sort of evolution together. So, that's great. So, any family that wants to donate is welcome too. And the other highlight for the Quashnet School, which is unique to this year, was that each fourth grade class went on a field trip to the Pennakese Island, and it's been used for multiple purposes over the years, but currently is managed by the mass wildlife as a birth sanctuary, and so the students took a 45-minute boat ride that left Woods Hole, and then they spent time on the island, meeting with rangers and mass wildlife, mapping the island, learning about the history and experiencing an uninhabited island. And it was, the island was the setting for the book Beyond the Bright Sea, a book that all fourth grade students enjoyed, written by author Lauren Wolf, who also visited the Quashnet School. So, it was a really great connection, and we really want to thank David Coharian and Jim Newman from Pennakese Island for, they came to us last summer with this idea, and I will say, I think Principal O'Brien and Principal LaBelle actually took a little field trip to get an idea where it would be, but they sort of embraced the idea, and then the kudos to the fourth grade teachers for also embracing the idea, and a few other staff members who made a few more than one visits of the island to give them classes. That's a great, it was a great experience, I think, for kids to really recognize the nature and the disconnect, and they were all very tired on the way home.
Did they? So, is that gonna be something that they do annually now with the fourth grade curriculum, or?
Well, we were the pilot district, so I think they're gonna work on building sort of a more specific program, and then, I don't know if eventually there'll be more of a cost associated with it, but it did get very positive reviews, so I would presume it might be something they choose to do again. But, Principal Brian had some ideas to work with those who are organizing it with sort of, not improving, increasing some of the lesson planning that goes with it.
Just a question back up on the Cape Kids Meals. Is that limited only to Quashnet families?
It's eventually gonna be at the Coombs School as well, in terms of, what the Cape Kid Meals does is they, they package in this sort of white bag, in, you know, discreetly, certain items that kids like, would supplement for the weekend, and it's mostly done at the elementary level, but we do have an intention at the Coombs School. Coombs School doesn't have the same necessarily setup and storage place, but they could, what Principal O'Brien talked about was like honor society or student council members here would do the packaging here, and then the bags would get taken over to Coombs, and through their guidance, they would get distributed to the kids that were identified to need it. So, it will be a service project as well for the kids in this school.
Okay.
Okay, so, you have the middle high school report, 722 students. Some of the highlights were, one in particular, I wanted to give a shout out to Sue and Mike Musto, who are the owners of Trevi Cafe, so when they sponsored the wine dinner, May 7th, that allowed our chef, Will Staloski, and our Pro Start students to participate, not only in the food preparation, but also the serving, and the entire proceeds, which was $4,160, was provided to, back to the school to support the Pro Start program, so that's very generous of them, and the food was delicious. And lots of events at the end of the year. Grateful to the Mashpee Scholarship Foundation Trust for supporting the seniors with scholarships, and also being sort of an umbrella foundation for other groups that want to be able to provide a scholarship. Forty-nine Mashpee Middle High School students received scholarships, and also a shout out to Southport residents, because they have their, sort of their own pool of funds that they raise, and I believe they gave 11 scholarships this year, and then they also hosted a set of possibilities dinner, which included the scholarship winners, and that's really a nice event, because they, students sits at each table, there's not enough students for every table, but they really enjoy making up student offers. We have the report of Special Education Director, Dr. Curley, and if you know at the bottom, she will have the tenure analysis that has been requested at the July School Committee meeting, and then she talked about a little bit of an event, she was involved with personally the Community Crisis Intervention Team and some of the trainings that they helped provide to some of our first responders, and how they deal with, you know, students and youth people that might be feeling trauma or need to leave. So, we have 266 students on the high of you. The biggest jump there was preschool, which is. Then you have the athletic directors report, Matt Trivari, and some of this does seem a little bit older, but Cassie Baker and Nick Story were recognized as Mashpee's 2018-19 Scholar-Athlete Representatives for the South Shore League, and then varsity baseball, kudos to them, they did go to, they lost in their third tournament game, but they played really well. Unfortunately, we always seem to lose to the same school, which hopefully will not continue to happen.
Yes.
The JV girls' cross finished with a program history, best of 10, 4-1 record, which really bodes well to the future of the girls' cross program. And then I wanted to point it down at the bottom, boys tennis junior Liam Donovan, he plays in the number one spot, went 11-3 on the year against every opponent's top player, so he played the number one, so, although the tennis team overall didn't have the success they wanted, he did. And then, yes, then you have the personnel sheet. We have not included any of the higher, the people that have been hired most recently for the next school year, they're gonna be on the July report, it just felt like it might be a better presentation to have everybody on one, and hopefully everybody will be on board at that point, but you see all the departures down below. So, those are positions for going.
Are any of these retirements?
Yes.
Yeah.
There are, one, two, three, four, five, six, eight, eight retirements.
Okay. Go ahead.
We don't have, we're making progress on. And so you have the total listing of enrollment, 1,639 is the total of the enrollment in May. You have two submissions in your packet. One is the Rising Star article, which again, this was in the paper in May, I believe, but Emily Franks, a recent graduate, at the time she was a senior, was recognized for her work in being a rising star among our senior class, and then there were three other seniors from Mashpee who were recognized as nominees, Taj Bowen, Xavier Gonzalez, and Alexis Swenzel. So, congratulations to them, they're all worthy of that recognition. You have a little, this was out of the Southport Possibilities brochure that night at that dinner, and they have 111 Southport Falcons, and 43% of them are working in, with students in our three schools, and some of the examples, 13 are helping seniors, or did help seniors with mock interviews, seven participated in Career Day, 10 attended Tech Expert Technology Help sessions, several helped with reading programs and volunteering at the library, as well as at Coombs, and in the art rooms, one, it worked all year long with the Special Olympics After School Program here at Quashnet, and several helped with the After School Knitting Club at Quashnet, and then some have lectured on specialized topics at the high school. And three of our students participated regularly in a project they have at their site on their Martha Pond Project, along with Tom Happenstadt supported them, and then 19 Southport Falcons recently participated in a pottery night where they created bowls to be sold for the Southport scholarships. So, that program is in year two, and hopefully will continue to build. We've already established, we had a meeting on last Friday where they reviewed the Portrait of a Graduate and gave us input, and then we have an August meeting set up with the principals, where we'll review sort of needs and wants for next year and reflect on the past year, and then we have our bus tour date that has been set up for the fall. And also, just on Southport, they had two students, they created a logo for their Southport Falcons, and it was Michael DiPaolo, a Mashpee High School student, who created the logo that they chose, which is Southport Falcons with the Falcon, it says Connecting Generations is their sort of tagline. And then, I don't know if this is the final, but Isabella Egan was chosen for the logo she created for the Southport Residence Scholarship Fund. I'm not exactly sure they landed for sure on this, but it's seniors helping high school seniors. I like that they involve the students. Okay, then you have on there the Mashpee Public Police Department's Emergency Preparedness Drill on August 21st. So, we are seeking as many volunteers as possible to support the Mashpee Police Department. We don't exactly have the start end time yet, it's roughly about a four-hour commitment, I believe it will be in the morning, and the idea behind it, Detective Calhoun is spearheading this project, but his vision is to have 100 to 200 people participate in this emergency scenario, and it will involve other people within the town. So, we've sent out, and I'll continue to do so, generating interest from our school community, our staff, our families, and we also sent it to next year's junior seniors for students to participate, there's a few sophomores. So, if a parent feels their student could participate in that, we would welcome that, we just don't want to force it on anyone, but there will be sort of a hostage scenario at the high school that, according to his vision, you know, the roads will be shut down, it will be, and there will be the reunification type of testing, and it's not only sort of testing this collaborative response, because it's multiple towns will support Mashpee, it's also sort of testing us as administrators to basically how we handle it, and, you know, if we can track everybody, so I did make sure we have, everyone has to sign in, because we just can't track without some kind of an attendance like we do normally, but if ever, we really want it to be a success, and we need people to make it happen, so that it's as realistic as we can make it.
So, are any teachers participating?
We offered it to all the teachers, I have had some sign up, it's not.
It would just be a volunteer, okay.
But you'll hear more about that at the July meeting, and hopefully everybody would like be able to participate. Okay, you also have in your packet, a letter that was received by Principal Balistrachi on May 30th, from the New England Association of Schools and Colleges, which is MEAS, and it is related to the accreditation process, and so what you have in this report, the committee of public secondary schools voted to accept the five-year progress report of Mashpee High School and to continue the school's accreditation. So, they highlight several things that they are pleased with. So, there are, I believe there are 11 things cited, and then there are areas highlighted as recommendations, so I'm just gonna read what Principal Balistrachi provided to me. On May 30th, Mashpee High School received notification that the Committee on Public Secondary Schools accepted our accreditation five-year progress report. The notification cited 11 items that the committee was pleased about. The report also contains seven highlighted recommendations. As part of the accreditation process, we are required to provide updates in which we share the action steps we are taking to complete all of the recommendations from the last decennial visit, 10-year visit. This summer, the MMHS leadership team will continue to plan strategically to accomplish the highlighted recommendations. We will create a survey for families regarding services from all departments within the school. We will implement Mashpee's Portrait of a Graduate, which will support our meeting some of the highlighted recommendations with respect to the school's core values, beliefs, and learning expectations. We have a deadline of March 1st, 2020, to submit a special progress report describing the actions we are and will be taking to complete the highlighted recommendations. Timelines will be established this summer to guide completion of our work. That's a normal process that goes through. Any questions on anything?
Okay, so that's, that's it?
That's it, so.
All right, next on the agenda is the report of the business manager. Mr. Funk, you're up.
Madam Chairman, we're in the process of closing out FY '19. If you look at the first page, you'll notice at the bottom that we are in a deficit on the expense side of $2,000, $2,888.84, and that has since risen, since this was published. Remember, we have an offset of $355,411 that we will then back out. Everything has been put into the budget, we will back out whatever we need up to $355,411. Right now, it looks like a very smooth closeout. If you remember back when I first started to build this budget back a year ago, that we had talked about making sure that all the payroll, all the salary items were in there, so the salary is closing out quite easily. We thought we were going to have to use some of that $355,411 for salaries because of the substitutes. We had a lot of double, you know, long-term substitutes, but we were able to, it looks like we're going to, right now, close out without using any of the $355, so the $355 is going to be used just on the expense side, and we'll probably have a balance on the salary side of somewhere around $65,000, which is pretty normal. I'll entertain any questions on the, first on the budget, and then on the grants, and then I'll talk about the school choice coming up. Are there any questions on the budget? And again, we're still in a closing out phase here, so you'll get another report in July. Go ahead, John.
So, this reflects expenses through the end of May, correct?
As of 6/20, but then what happens is, other things are coming in, there are conferences, conferences that teachers are going to out of state, so we're putting that in.
Does this include the stipend payments?
Well, the stipend payments would be on the, on the salary side, and what I just gave you includes all the stipends.
Okay, so they have.
We've made that payment, yes.
Okay.
And the answer is yes.
Okay. Good.
Which was quite a surprise.
Do you have any questions on the budget? Jeff?
I do not. I didn't know if you had a, an update on the amount you expect to have at the end, if I missed out, I apologize.
He hasn't gotten.
That'd be our last meeting.
At the, at the end, on the budget?
He hasn't got, yeah, he hasn't gotten the choice yet.
Yeah.
Yes.
We're still closing out, Jeff, we're still closing out this week. We have until the 15th of July in which to pay, we try to pay as much as we can, so that we don't have an encumbrance list, and then, you know, we carry the encumbrance list forward, and then a year later, whatever, we don't use of that encumbrance gets closed out to the town. And I can give you last year's, once we close everything out. But it's, 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 we're still working on closing out.
Can you hear us okay?
I can, I was just trying to make sure I heard Paul, Paul right, and I apologize, can you just explain, at least to me, as, shall we understand, when we do figure out all the final dozen goals for the budget, and we have a final amount of money, of which we are gonna discuss what we're gonna do with, what is the deadline for when we have to provide money back to the town, if that's the way we do it?
Well, at the July meeting, I'm gonna have to report that out.
That's perfect.
Yeah, because we have until the 15, Jeff, we have until the 15 to pay bills without putting them on an encumbrance list.
Got it, okay.
Okay, so they leave that open. We can't cut any more purchase audits after Friday. In other words, we can't open another purchase audit, but we can pay, we can pay bills up until the 15th.
So, I thought that we had discussed that previously in regard to the disposition of funds at the end of the closeout, and that any remaining funds would offset school choice.
Right, $355,004.11, and I'll try to explain what Jeff is leading to. Right now, before I came down here, we were at, I showed you $202,000, we were at $285,000.
Right.
Now, we're gonna go back through all of the encumbrances again, and see how much of that, so let's say it comes down, I know it can come down at least 20,000, I'll use, we'll go down to 250, I'll use 250,000. Now, we have a negative balance of 250,000, so we have to back 250,000 out of munis over into choice, but by line item. All of it's gonna come from the technology, because that's where we zero it out.
Right.
So, so now, there's $105,004.11, what do we do with that? Do we, do we carry that Do we, do we carry that forward or do you want to move that all back? Once we move it all back, you know, if we, if we, if we only move back a minus 250, then we still have 100. If we move back $355 of bills, then that leaves money in the, in the budget.
That would go back to the town.
That would go back to the town, yes it would.
Right. And I thought what we had decided when we were voting on the budget was that we would zero out the expenses against the choice up to that $355. If there was anything left that would reduce the amount of, of funds coming out of choice. So that there would be nothing to turn back.
Right, the way you stated it, exactly. I'm going to use that 250 again.
Right.
That negative 250, and most of it, you know, will come out of technology. We move that into choice.
Right.
So now it's a zero balance-
Exactly.
-on the budget. Up to, up to $355,411.
Right, our appropriation is zero.
Correct.
Right. So there'd be nothing to turn back.
That's it.
Just the salary side.
Yep, that's it.
Okay.
You get all that, Jeff?
Sorry, I was on mute. Yes, I do have all that. My, my concern is that if we, there's three, three avenues that I understand for this money, really three and a half. One is you return it back to the town. Two is we keep it in school choice and ultimately it gets offset next year or the year after in school choice. Our school choice offset would be another $105,000 extra. Or we spend it. You know, my only concern about the timeline is, is that if we can't cut another PO as of after this Friday, then we won't be able to spend it, correct?
That is not correct because choice is a revolving, is a revolving account and we can expend that at any time.
Right, but that's, that's presuming that we put the excess into choice.
Correct, correct. I'm still on that theory that the 250 wipes out to zero.
Wipes out the appropriation for the budget.
Correct, it should be.
Right.
And the reason I'm asking all these questions, and sorry Nicole, if I could just say something real quick, is the reason I'm asking these questions is I just want to make sure that we have the ability to make appropriate decisions on the next school committee meeting without meeting any kind of, I'm sorry, missing any kind of deadlines. And it seems like we can have a discussion after Paul has more information and knows exactly what's outstanding and how the school choice sits, we can actually discuss it at the next meeting. Is that what everybody else is hearing?
Yep.
Yeah.
Because I'll have that, you know, the 250 will be, I'm going to give you the figure.
Right.
This is what it is. And then you people decide what you want to do. It's not up to me, but when I get to, and then I'm going to get to choice again and we'll have some, I know this is going to, I have some discussions tonight on choice.
Okay.
Are there any other questions on budget?
You guys good?
Good.
Okay.
Nope, go ahead.
Moving on to the grants, again, most of the grants, we have very few grants. Dr. Curly does the 240 grant. A lot of this is, you'll notice that we have, the 240 grant is $417,000. We've received $354,018, and we've only expended $289. A lot of that gets expended over the summer. That's, we use, we use that for our special ed summer program. So you'll start to see that. And we can carry that, we can carry that forward into the next fiscal year. That's a two-year grant, actually a 27-month, if I'm not mistaken. Dr.?
I'm taking notes, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, no, you can't, you have-
27 months, correct?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you. Just verifying. Any questions on the grants?
They have plans to spend down that in yet, Ned? I haven't, I didn't make the last meeting.
They, they, they just, they, they just had a lot of expenditures and I'm just waiting for the last couple of bus bills to come in and that, that, that will get spent out to zero.
Okay. So my understanding is the legislation that was being discussed in the State House would affect, could affect the circuit breaker reimbursement or not? Do we know? Did that go anywhere? Does anybody know?
I don't know if which, which budget has been approved yet, but there was an increase in the circuit breaker reimbursement.
Right, but, yeah. There is, there probably, there is an increase in it, but it's still an appropriation. So, you know, it's still, they're supposed to be at 75%. Some years it's 72, 68.
I see, okay.
It's not going to be-
Yeah.
Any other questions? Moving on to the revolving accounts. Athletics, been making purchases, so that's been decreasing. The rest of them are pretty much preschool. We expanded some of the preschool. We tried to be very conservative there because we may need that next year or years down the road, so we'll have to watch that. Any questions on the revolving? We'll see next month the community school will start to be chosen.
Just a related question though, in regard to facility rentals. When is the work going to be starting on the auditorium?
So we had a meeting with representatives from both the lighting and sound. And timing wise, it's likely to be in the fall. They're already booked through the summer with some other school projects and they have to get the quote together. There was a possibility of light, light compact being involved as well. So I think when we met with them, they would try to be strategic with it and look at like what, what the use of it was. They need like a three-week block of time. So whether we, if town meetings in the gym, that wouldn't interfere in an October date. So we should have a concrete date by, before the school year starts because they'll come back with their-
Yeah, too bad they can't do it during the summer.
They can't.
So, okay.
They're doing some other local ones.
But at least we've got funding for it, so that's good. All right.
All right, Ms. Funk.
All right, ready to go? Moving on to school choice. Well, since I, I did this report, we have received another payment. So the bottom line where it says balance of $216,664.73, the balance now is $263,732.73. So we talked about the, the working group, the finance working group has always said that we wanted that $250,000. I'll call it the floor, the lowest you can go. And we, we, we made that, so $263. So we're fine there. But then what happens at the end of the year is I have to file a report on every choice student by name, by address, what town they came from, what grade they're in. And I have to file that. Plus, we have to file any special ed services that any of those choice students receive. And then what happens is that's filed in April. And that, that is the final, the final final. And they take that and they go back to all your payments to see what they've paid you and then to see what, to see what the special needs costs were and so forth. So we will be receiving, if you look at your report, there's a $66,468. That's actually from FY '18. That's the last payment from FY '18 plus all the special ed costs. So if a kid leaves in January, you only get 50%. So they take that all into consideration and that's what that $66,468. Now, I won't see that until July. I hope to have it by the July meeting so I get a real good picture. But I did do some projections. So I'm projecting that our balance after, after we back out the $538, that we said we would offset the FY '20 budget for the town, that we will end up somewhere around between $310,000 and $329,000 as, as a final bottom balance.
And that assumes you're pulling the whole $355,411 out though?
Yeah.
That is correct. That is correct. Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Because it's, it's shown there, the $355,411. And then the $538 is down below. So we've, we've done very well. But I, I have to say, I have to thank Dr. Curly also because she gathers all that information on the services. And that's not an easy job either because they have to go through and find out what students are under IEPs and, you know, what services they're getting. And some of them, you know, the services they're getting is tens of thousands of dollars. So, you know, part of that 60, a lot of this, all I can tell you is a lot of the 66, I'll use that number, from last year, is special ed. It's not so much, because the state is pretty much dead on, on what you have for school choice kids, the $5,000. They're just looking to, what kids came and went, so. So I'm looking somewhere around 310 to 329. I'll, you know, if someone would like take a bet on that, I, I, I'm not-
I wouldn't bet against you.
That's why I give you that anyway. I give you that, I give you that, yeah. If it comes in at 2, 300, then I'm out the door. So again, it's a projection. Any other questions?
Good job. Okay. All right, thank you, Ms. Funk.
Thank you, Madam Chairman.
I just don't get tired of hearing that. Can I have, next we have the report of subcommittees. So where do you want to start with that?
I think the only subcommittee that I'm aware of meeting is Policy.
Ah, yeah.
Because negotiations didn't, so it's just, which we are going to be doing down under new business.
And the policy we voted on last meeting, what we had talked about at the policy subcommittee meeting.
The one?
Which one?
So what you're talking about?
The concussion policy.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. Never mind. Never mind. Wrong subcommittee.
I was going to say, you're not on policy.
I'm not even on policy. I was thinking curriculum.
Yeah, curriculum, we did do that. So, so basically the only, for the rest of the group, the only subcommittee that met was Policy and they, we're going to address that in the new business. Yeah. Or is the vehicle one on there as well?
No, because I'm still, I didn't want to put it on here yet because there were a couple of questions. I'm still getting that. A couple of the questions you asked, we do have answers to. So that will be on July.
We lost Jeff.
The last two.
Uh-oh.
So the only one is going to be the concussion one for tonight. I mean, we can talk if you want about the aroma set one, which was on Policy that we did talk about.
No, I don't care, I wasn't there. Is that going to, is that why Stacy's here?
She's here for the concussion policy.
Oh, okay.
And she just loves to come to our meetings anyway. And probably because of the school physician coming up.
Okay.
Who's supposed to come.
All right. Jeff, you're back. Okay, so then I guess we can move on to unfinished business. And first we have working group updates, financial roadmap for fiscal planning. Jeff and George?
We were unable to coordinate a meeting.
Okay. Efficiency and effectiveness and efficiency. Chris and George?
We have not had a meeting as well, right? Correct me if I'm wrong because obviously I've been wrong before, so.
We have not met between now and not previous meeting.
I don't believe so.
Previous school committee meeting.
Outreach committee is Jeff and I. We did meet. Didn't we? Jeff?
I can look at my calendar.
Yeah.
I'm going to find out.
Matt? Was on?
It was, um, May 4th.
Oh, was that long ago?
May 4th. In between the June 7th.
Oh, okay. All right. Seems like yesterday, Jeff. It's a great meeting. Okay, so nothing new to report there. And then we don't have anything on the school start time implementation. We haven't.
No, just that, you know, the bus route, the bus routes-
Oh, yeah, I saw that.
-have been published. They're on the website, they were given out to all the families. There was a Google form created for any concerns parents had, so then Kathy will look at them all together, but that is early to have the bus routes out. We're speaking to others.
Yeah.
It's like three months early.
Yeah. You did a really good job.
Right. And then we, I've had some meetings with, with Provost at the Boys and Girls Club and I had one with Mayor Bradbury. The Mayor Bradbury meeting was more specific to providing sort of a little wraparound program for the four-year-olds. So the four-year-olds, it's a full-day program, starts at 9:15. So she's going, she, pretty sure she's going to be able to accommodate that age four-year-olds starting at seven at the Coombs School by either regrouping between this school and that school or based on numbers. And then the other glitch for that program is that their day ends at 2:50 under the new timeframe where the other kids don't get out till 3:35. So they will provide care starting at 2:50 all the way till 5:30. For four-year-olds only because their day is done at 2:50. So that was a good piece. And then the Boys and Girls Club, it didn't look too promising for a 7:15 in the morning drop-off. Right now it's scheduled for 7:30, but with Provost did say on an individual family basis, she would try to make accommodations that would make it work.
Okay. All right, so next we must reorganize or complete, complete our reorganization.
So you have what last year's was and then you have this chart that shows who was interested in what for this next year.
Okay, so are there any that we need to?
I think, you know, the top part was done at the last meeting. And so starting with the subcommittees, you need two on each of those. And so in some cases it works quite neatly and in other cases you need to decide.
So the only thing I noticed when, when I looked at this is that I had originally indicated an interest in curriculum when I was not told to be interested in negotiations. So, so since there are two, Chris, it looks like you could go either way on curriculum. So if, if that's fine with you, then I'll withdraw my, my interest in that.
It's fine with me.
So then that leaves us with two, two primaries on curriculum. But then we have two, we only need one alternate. So Jeff or Don?
Or primary.
Chris is going to be a primary.
Primary with you. Get to see more of it.
Okay, real quick, is this available electronically in the nomination challenge? I don't have that.
Um, it is. I don't have my computer.
Want me to hold it up in front of the camera?
Do you have your phone on you? I'll take a picture and text it to you.
She doesn't have her computer. Okay.
He'll text it to you.
Very good. So-
We are stressing the limits of technology.
Yeah. So Jeff, it's, the question on the table is you and Don are alternates, we have to decide which one of you is going to be the alternate for curriculum. We have no alternates for negotiations, just two primaries.
I'm, I'm fine with deferring.
We can defer to negotiations. And I defer to Don if he wants to be on curriculum or not. I believe I was on curriculum this time. So if he wants it, he can have it. If not, I'll be willing to have him be alternate.
I'll defer to Jeff on that.
I'll defer to Jeff on that.
Okay. So, it's, so that goes... Yes, it goes to you, Jeff.
So, he's the alternate.
Yeah.
And the game continues.
Do we need an alternate for negotiations?
That would be nice, probably.
Well, can't be Jeff.
Chris.
Can you do the chart in an email?
I can do alternate for negotiations, yes.
Because we've got EAC wrapped up.
Since you did Unit A last time, that might be helpful.
Yep, I can do that. I'm confident this will send.
All right. So, whose negotiations is holding on?
Okay, next is Policy. Apparently, is a, just a fight to the death over who gets to do that one. So...
Looks like Don's one of the ones who's got it.
Yeah, Don and somebody. I mean, I guess I can stay on that if nobody else is interested.
Did you get it yet? Well, I sent him an email. But did you get it yet, Jeff?
I didn't, I did not get it yet.
We can signal him.
No, let me disrupt the mojo. I can, I can follow up.
Watch the text. It might just pop up all of a sudden.
So, is the idea that on the four subcommittees, somebody, you have to be a primary on two?
Well, five, you know, there's four committees and five people. So, it's, everybody's not gonna get on two.
Oh, okay.
Everyone should be a primary on at least one.
At least one, yeah.
I just texted it to you, too. All right. So, Policy is Don as the primary. Who's the other primary? I already wrote that it was Nicole.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because she said it.
Okay.
I got it. Thank you.
Good.
Alternate is either Jeff or Chris. Even though George said not interested, doesn't mean I can't throw him in.
I think Jeff, that would be a good one for you to be alternate on, the Policy one. Since you seem to be interested in...
Be careful.
I mean, you're just the alternate, but...
Doing perfectly.
Okay. And then Superintendent Evaluation looks like Chris and Jeff with either, and I'm, I'm, I'm okay to not be an alternate on that. Can you do that, Don?
I can do it or...
So do I. What about you, George? Can you be an alternate on Superintendent Eval?
Second, I can do that.
We only have one or two meetings.
Yep. All right. So, subcommittees are finished.
Do we have to vote on them?
Oh, do we have to vote on these? Okay. So, can we, I'll take a motion to accept the new Subcommittee assignments for the 1920.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Do I need to read through them again for everybody?
Could you read through real quick, please?
So, curriculum, our two primaries are Chris and George with Jeff as the alternate. Negotiations is myself and Don with Chris as the alternate. Policy is myself and Don with Jeff as the alternate. Superintendent Eval is Jeff and Chris with George as the alternate.
Second.
That's Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, ma'am.
No.
No, chair.
No, believe me, I know.
All right. Is any, any further discussion?
Nope.
Okay. All right. George, how do you vote?
Yes.
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 Jeff? Jeff? Yes. Okay. Moving on to liaison positions. Let's see. So, we have just a primary and alternate for each, right? And at some point, we were gonna discuss whether we need liaisons for some of these groups. Are we gonna do that now? Or are we just gonna continue with the status quo?
I think we can continue and then maybe the, yeah, the efficiency group can maybe go through the list and make recommendations.
So moved.
Sounds like a good idea.
Yes. That would be...
No, you don't have to. I'm taking the notes. I'm very nervous.
Yeah. Yeah, that would be great because I think there's about four on here that we talked about, you know, that are somewhat overlapping or maybe redundant, you know, not necessary as a... Or we could establish that the de facto liaison to those groups is the Chair of the School Committee or something. You know, when you guys discuss it.
For all of them.
Yeah, for all of them.
Yeah.
So moved.
I second that one.
So, first is Board of Selectmen. We have Jeff and Don both interested in running primary on that and a couple of people interested in alternates.
I'll defer to Jeff on that.
Okay, Jeff. Don's deferring to you as the primary. And we've got, I mean, I don't need to be an alternate.
I don't need to be either. So, we can have Don if he wants to be.
So, Don is gonna be the alternate. Is that okay with you?
Sure.
Okay. Boosters is Chris with Don as the alternate. Cape Cod Collaborative. So, I was talking to Don about this. So, I've been on this for two years and I'm just anticipating that with being on negotiations for Unit A that it's gonna be difficult and B. It's gonna be difficult for me to do that. So, I'm, I'm happy to withdraw myself as primary if either Don or George is interested in taking that on.
I can do that.
All right. Great.
Oh, Don, I'm sorry. Did you vote on it?
No, that's, that's fine. I can be the alternate.
I will say one thing that I have, I kind of forgot that I had an alternate with these. So, there have been meetings that I haven't been able to make and I've sent my regrets and, you know, it hasn't been a huge issue. But they do suffer from quorum problems quite a bit. So, anytime that there was an indication that they wouldn't have a quorum, I kind of moved mountains to try to be there and I forgot that I had a backup that I could have called, George. Sorry.
Okay.
So, just a reminder to use your backup when that happens because they're...
Same phone number as Sasha's.
Yeah. Good to know. Okay. All right. So, primaries, George. Alternate is Don. Mashpee FinCom looks like George, primary. Anyone's willing to be the alternate? I think I was before at one point. I don't know if I was last year, but so...
I have never been primary or alternate on this, so unless somebody wants to be, I'll take the alternate.
Chris says he's never done it and he'd like to. Did you hear that, Jeff?
I did. I don't have any problem with that. I was, I was just curious if I wanna connect this a little bit to the Financial Working Group so the two folks that are on the Financial Working Group can share out the primary and alternate for the Finance Committee and if that made a little bit of sense.
Well, I think it would spread the experience a little bit.
Yeah.
I wouldn't mind doing that. I mean, George has listed as primary anyway for Working Group.
Who was the, was it you this year, Jeff?
I believe it was George.
It was George. So, it was George. So, we did that last year.
George and Jeff.
That's what we're discussing.
Alternate, yes.
Are you the alternate for FinCom?
For FinCom.
I think that would make sense.
Chris? Jeff, are you okay with Chris doing it?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay. Health Advisory, we have George and myself as the alternate.
Nothing personal.
Yeah. Indian Ed. You know, I put, I took myself off as primary because I, this is one of these ones where I think, you know, the superintendent's at the meetings and I'm not sure. I think this is one of the ones that you might wanna look at. But for the time being, it looks like Chris as the primary and...
Do you wanna do the alternate?
Yeah, I guess I can. Will we get it sorted? Mashpee Substance Use Task Force is George with Chris as the alternate. Mashpee Planning and Construction, Jeff is the primary. Every, anyone will do the alternate. Do you have preference?
I'll take myself out of the alternate. I'm already alternating on a few things.
Okay.
I'll take myself out, too. So...
Well, that makes me, I guess. Okay.
Okay, good. Okay. So, Planning and Construction is you and George as the alternate, Jeff. CPAC is between Chris and Don as primary.
I was last year, so I can, I'll let Don go back to doing it. I know he did a couple of years ago, but...
It's John. You are...
I could do that since I won't...
Yeah.
Won't have Wednesday's time. So, that's okay.
Okay. So, you're the primary. Who will be the alternate for CPAC? Either Jeff or Chris.
If Jeff would like to do it, I know, like I said, me and Don have done it the last two or three years. So, Jeff hasn't had the opportunity. So, if he wants to be alternate, he can go ahead and do that.
Alternate for CPAC? Okay. You got it. Sick Bank, primary is Chris, alternate is Don. Congratulations for keeping that band together.
Sick Bank is awesome.
Tribe, Tribal Liaison, I'm still the primary. We have a couple of folks interested in alternate. Does anybody? Don or Chris?
I have a whole lot of stuff. I'm a little nervous. I'm gonna get overwhelmed with too many things.
I could do that.
Okay, Don as the alternate. Finance Working Group. Are we gonna stay the course on this one? Or, Don, do you wanna swap out with Jeff or George? Or Jeff and, you guys are both still interested in doing it. So, it's just a discussion about...
Who ended up getting the Finance Committee primary alternate?
The Finance Committee is George as the primary and Chris as the alternate.
I mean, I, I have a lot of interest in the Financial Working Group, but I will absolutely defer to anyone else who wants to do it. I think it's a really important part of what we're doing.
I mean, I will do it, but I'm not, I don't wanna take it from somebody that really wants to, but I will if nobody else wants to.
Don, what do you think? You had identified as primary.
I'm just looking here. Now, I would, I would like to do that this year if possible.
Okay. So, so Jeff, I mean, Jeff, you would say you'll pull off if somebody else wants it?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right. So, that goes Don and George with, do you wanna remain the alternate, Jeff? That might make sense. Wait, I'm sorry. Oh, yeah, it's two. It's two primaries with one alternate, right? Okay. And then Outreach and Engagement Working Group is Chris and myself with either Jeff or Don as an alternate.
I'm gonna be on the other one. I'm gonna pass on that one then.
Okay. He said, he said you get to do it.
Oh, yay. I believe you'll choose for the meeting.
You're, you're the alternate, though. So, you're, that should be fine. We good down there, George?
The alternate is Jeff.
Yep, he's good.
Okay. School Committee Efficiency and Effectiveness Working Group. We have three people vi, oh, wow. Lots of people vying for primary.
I will, I will take myself off. I have four primaries already, so...
And I'll take myself off. I've done that one, so... So, I'll leave you, George and Jeff.
Okay, George and Jeff with myself as the alternate.
Yeah.
Chris, not interested in being the Legislative Representative. I thought that last year, I was told that the Legislative Representative is the Chair. Or don't we have a school policy that says that or something? I feel like that was...
It doesn't say that.
Oh, okay.
I could be anybody. If there's other people interested, I'll...
I'm not aware that our, who was our Legislative Representative last year?
We don't have.
Yeah.
That's a new one.
Oh. This was one of those things that was a policy that when we did the handbook, it said that we should have one. And we added the policy to the Mashpee Public Schools handbook. And so, therefore, we needed to designate somebody. Right? Okay. So, who, you, Don took himself off.
If either you or Jeff wants it, I'm fine with not being... I think Don said no.
Yeah, Don said no.
I'm circling between those two.
So, Jeff, do you wanna be the Legislative Representative? I think it makes sense as the Chair.
Sure.
Right. I agree.
Okay.
All right. You just wanna quickly recap them?
Yes. Okay. So, liaison positions. Mashpee Board of Selectmen, Jeff is the primary, Don is the alternate. Boosters, Chris is the primary, Don is the alternate. Cape Cod Collaborative, George is the primary, Don is the alternate. Mashpee Finance Committee, George is the primary, Chris is the alternate. Health Advisory, George is the primary, myself is the alternate. Indian Ed, Chris is the primary, myself is the alternate. Substance Use Task Force, George is the primary, Chris is the alternate. Mashpee Planning and Construction, Jeff is the primary, George is the alternate. CPAC, Don is the primary, Jeff is the alternate. Sick Bank, Chris is the primary, Don is the alternate. Tribal Liaison, myself is the primary, Don is the alternate. Finance Working Group, two primaries are Don and George with Jeff. Wait, did we say Jeff is the alternate?
That's right.
Yeah, okay. I didn't have it circled, sorry. Outreach and Engagement Working Group, myself and Chris is the primaries, Jeff is the alternate. Efficiency and Effectiveness is Jeff and George as the primaries, myself as the alternate. And Jeff, our fearless leader, is our Legislative Representative. And we don't need to vote on the liaisons.
Can I have a quick question?
Yeah.
I just wanna make sure for the Financial Working Group, did Chris express interest in being the alternate? Because with George on the working group, we do have some...
Continuity.
Yeah, continuity.
Yeah.
I did not. I did not express interest, no.
You did, well, you did initially, but...
Well, I said, basically, if nobody else wants it, I'll do it.
Took yourself out of it. All right.
Yeah.
Okay, reorganization.
I hear you.
So, we voted on, on the agenda indicates Subcommittee Liaisons and Working Groups for a vote. So we voted on, on the agenda indicates Subcommittee Liaisons and Working Groups for a vote. We voted on Subcommittee.
Yes.
Does that mean we need to vote on Liaisons and Working Groups? Okay. Next on the agenda is Mashpee Community Picnic, July 1st, which holy crap is next week. I just saw something. I was like, oh my gosh, July 1st is next week.
So just a heads up is that it, our setup would be at four, like last year with the tent. And the tables, we are not serving ice cream, but we have several activities planned. We have a spinning wheel that has some options, some giveaways. We had had a conversation about trying to have kids or visitors to the table provide us with some feedback about the schools. But we, we have our brochure, updated brochure to hand out, and an updated brochure on school start time. But we really felt like just our presence and having conversation, not necessarily using that opportunity as another data collection point. So right now, you know, you, everyone who comes, they get a stamp, they can spin the wheel, they might get a frisbee, they might get a beach ball, they might get a bag. They might get a raffle on about $145 worth of gift certificates to restaurants. That's, and then there's a guessing the number of candy in the jar thing, and so.
Are we selling anything?
No, we're not. We're dealing with them.
Okay. And the magnets, are they, did they come in?
The magnets, we have magnets. We have a ton of magnets.
Okay.
I'll put in the order.
I also heard that Dawn was going to be judging on chainsaws and eating fire. Can you confirm this?
I thought it was knives. I've been practicing with knives.
So just quickly, there was a Google form that went around for signing up. And I know that Jeff has volunteered to transport the tent. We do have the van that we used the year before here. Because they wanted them moved away from the high school anyway. We already have three tables in it, so the idea was we were going to put the tent in that, all of that, get it driven up there. But someone may be more than just Jeff to put the tent up.
I can come at four. I said I'd come at.
You said you'd come from five to six and give out brochures, frisbees, and beach balls.
I can do four, I can do four.
Okay, so. I didn't say anything.
No, I know.
Yeah.
So, anyway. Fun time will be had by all. It does say on this chart, nine to 10 is cleanup, breakdown, and transport tent. No, that is around 8:30, we're going to break down and transport.
They're letting us break down before the fireworks?
Well, don't the fireworks start around 8:30 or 9?
They start.
We will have most of the van, most of the van can get packed. Nine to 10 seems very late.
We tore it down last year, and we were done, we were out of there before the fireworks started.
Yeah, we kind of, yeah, weren't, yeah, so.
Because once it gets.
Can I see that?
Yes, you may all have one of these, and it was shared by our Chair.
So you want your four?
I can do four.
So I'm going to add, so Chris, you'll meet us up there at the four o'clock time, right?
I will.
Okay. We just really need someone there to represent throughout. I will be there.
I'll, I'll be there at some time. I just don't know when yet. I need to check with my family.
Does anyone think they'll be in the, around the nine-ish to load the truck and take the tent down?
Dawn was trained in that. He's excellent.
What did we do last year, Chris? I feel like you and I. Van back or something.
Yeah, unless you have the money, because you have something.
But didn't we come the next day?
No, we drove it, we drove it, because I had to drive you back to school, or you drove me back to school or something.
I do know how to do that.
I feel like we were there at the end, but.
I was there at the end, that I remember.
Is that last year or the year before?
Could be the year before.
No, we've only done this one year.
So you really think, so you really think this is.
Seems like we've done it more than.
No, 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 this.
You really think this could be like eight thirty to nine is really the last block?
Yeah, I think nine, we should be truck loaded. Watch the fireworks if you want to.
Okay.
Yeah, we will take out that line.
I'll definitely be there for a setup. The rest of the time, I'll have to get back here. I'll see what the rest of the family's doing.
So.
You can submit a surrogate.
Will we all be there? Will we all be there at some point?
Yes.
Okay, all right, that's good.
Jeff, he'll come back. All right, so that's great.
Okay, so that's the picnic.
All right.
All right, so. Six fifty. So moving on to new business. First is the appointment of the school physician consultant.
So I'm super happy that we have Dr. Parkinson here. I'm going to read my little book that was in the packet. On June 6th of 2019, Assistant Superintendent Hope Hanscom, Mashpee Public Schools Nurse Coordinator Stacey Gackel. And I interviewed two applicants for the position of the school physician consultant. It is our recommendation that Dr. Gregory Parkinson be named as the school physician consultant for the Mashpee Public Schools. The contract with Dr. Parkinson will be from July 1 of 19 through June 30 of 2022, and compensation for the 1920 school year will be $6,000. Dr. Parkinson has been a pediatrician in Falmouth since 1995 and has cared for many of our Mashpee children. In addition to his practice, Dr. Parkinson has been the school physician for the Falmouth Public Schools since 2017. Dr. Parkinson believes that an effective school physician provides support to the school nurses, advises on health policies, protocols, and procedures. Partners with our guidance departments in regards to the social emotional wellness of students and staff, and advocates for the health and well-being of all children. He stated in his interview that he is a strong supporter of later school start times and looks forward to being a part of the Mashpee Public Schools as this change is implemented. So it is.
I like you already.
Move to approve? Move to approve?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve by George, a second by Dawn. Any discussion? Jeff, do you have anything?
And Dr. Parkinson, I don't know if you want to come up, just so they can put a face to a name.
Yeah.
This is Dr. Greg Parkinson.
Hi.
Do you have any questions for Dr. Parkinson?
Just flick the microphone on. Flip it on?
All of our watchers.
Yes, it's for them to be able to hear you. Yeah.
Yeah, you won't. It's just sound.
Sure.
Yeah.
No, it's, it's a pleasure to be here. I'm really excited about the opportunity. Yeah, I've looked after a lot of Mashpee kids for a lot of years, and, and, you know, through them, they really helped. So it's, you know, I, I feel like I, I, I know a lot of the families at Mashpee already, which I think is the, the most important thing. And, and, you know, this is such a difficult time for children and families. I think it's unprecedented in the, you know, well, over 20 years that I've been in the area in terms of what everybody is going through, because of the social stresses on, on children and families. And so it makes it an opportunity to try to, to try to help.
So Patty was telling me, are you the physician consultant for any other districts?
Right, so just a couple of years ago, I started as the physician for the Falmouth Schools.
Okay.
And so that's, that's been great, and, and, you know. It sort of coincided with the graduation from high school of my youngest child. And so it gives me a chance to continue to have my foot in the, in the door with, with my children having all graduated now. And I just always feel like when I go into school, that I come out feeling good about the world. So I, I really enjoy being there, and, you know, let's face it, you know, pediatrics has become a community endeavor, you know? I mean, if it doesn't take a village to raise a child, it sure as heck does to keep a teenager on the right path. So, you know, it's more and more of what we do in the office is socio, you know, socio-emotional health. And, you know, the schools, you know, are really appreciative of what they're doing in that, and, you know, it's a natural thing.
It's actually kind of, I proposed that we're going to subsequently be discussing concussion policy. And I was just curious in regard to your take on that.
Right, so just by way of background. I actually sit on the, the State DPH Committee for concussions. And, and I'm the, I call myself the, the lowly, you know, primary care provider in a room full of world experts on the subject. Because some of the people in Boston truly are, you know, the criteria are named after them and that sort of thing. And so it's, it's a window into what's going on. I'll also preface it by saying I spent the first 29 years of my life in Canada, so I grew up with hockey. And raised three hockey players, and among other sports, and so, and coached for 10 years. So sometimes I think they only kept me on the bench because if they got hurt, they didn't have to worry about what they were going to do, but they just looked at me. And, and so, I think I have a really good sense of what it's like from every aspect. Whether it's my own kids not wanting to tell me when they got hurt, or their coaches, you know, swearing under their breath because I said somebody wasn't ready to go back yet, even though really they weren't, but, you know, you know how that goes. And to the recognition that, you know, 999, 1,999 out of 1,000 are not going to be making their living playing sports. And even the one who does, that prob, that one more than anybody probably needs to keep a good brain, because they're the one that's going to be involved in it longer, and that's the bottom line, it's all about preparing enough. But, you know, as I say all the time to the kids when they come in, I spend the vast majority of my time trying to encourage inactive kids to be more active. And I hate telling active kids they gotta wait for a couple of weeks. But if that's what keeps them healthy in the long term, that's what I hate to do, so.
Excellent observation. Thank you.
I had just had a question. I remember when I first joined the committee and I found out that we had a school physician consultant. This was back when we were pretty crunch budget-wise, and we were, we asked, what does this person do? And it turned out that there weren't very many engagements with the district. And so I'm curious how you anticipate, you know, being involved and engaged with our students as in this position.
So the first thing that I learned, or, and I went into Falmouth this way, and, and, and I really, it has torn out time and again. The nurses are the boots on the ground, and they're the. That's my support I need to be able to advise in certain situations. I'd like to advocate to the administration. What I. That's one option I would say, right? Well, it also puts a little more pressure on the door. You know, that's all good. The, and it's also.
[inaudible]
One of the other things I wanted to mention is let them know that FAMU, um, basically, um, first of all, deals. And, um, it's a bit on that now, but it's something that our, um, first, but there are lots of them in, in the study. So I think that's what we need to perhaps, um, um, yes.
The four sets of entries that we had last year. All the drugs are in the case.
Yeah. Sorry.
Well, I don't have, uh, it seems like very nice.
So it's our point, we are, I can't, we have to hear you. These are the issues we're seeing happening. So, five.
Please feel free to, uh. Yeah. Yeah.
You have the motion. Oh, okay. Do you have anything before we go? Alright, so, sorry.
Don't get me started.
Alright, unanimous.
I know you had to discuss the concussion.
Yeah. Uh, that's next on the agenda. If you wanna stick around for just the.
Great.
Um, okay, so, uh, Stacy, do you wanna come up?
And you have the one in the packet, right Stacy, that we've.
So, for the benefit of everyone, this is an updated concussion policy identified as a first read on the agenda. Um, this has been reviewed by the policy subcommittee, myself and Don. And Stacy, you have.
And health advisory also.
Okay.
Good evening, thank you for having us, and thank you. Uh, so, yes, good evening, the policy subcommittee, one of the questions that came out of that, so before we look at the exact policy and changes, I promised Don I would, uh, Mr. Myers, I would have the statistics for the year. So we had five, um, school-sponsored activity concussions, so that doesn't necessarily mean sports teams. So it could be whatever.
Anytime, alright.
Sports teams, thirteen, classroom or hallway or in the school building, two. Uh, and some of that can also be like gym or recess, so. Uh, and then out of schools, some kids that came to school the next day with, um.
Symptoms.
Um, concussion protocol for us to follow, so there was seven of those. So, um, we're actually down a little bit, I believe we're down five.
I assume she had from last year's. Has the entire school. So.
So that's good.
It's like good or bad.
It's not shocking.
So, well, that's what my data was capturing and we should be really mindful of that, so it's a lot smaller, but.
Yeah, cap.
We have sixteen.
Sixteen.
We have really good football.
We just hand them out, we don't take them.
So, any questions on the numbers?
No, thanks for having us.
No, thank you, I appreciate it.
You're all probably gonna be more mindful every two years, thanks for having us. Uh, so, you have the copy in your packets, I believe, that have the changes. So, um, as far as looking at the, um, changes, we wanted to move the September of odd number years up to August, or by August or by September, correct?
By August of odd number years.
By August.
So, um, actually, you have the even better copy than I do. Uh, that's okay, I, I don't need mine. So, um, by August on that one. Any ques- thank you, questions on that, the rationale to that was to make sure that the kids who start all sports, which start at the middle end of August, it would be that number every two years. I should also preface that, um, the, our athletic trainer Leslie and, um, Matt and Joyce, who, um, is our high school nurse, you know, collaborate on this all the time and they're always making sure. And then they all go to trainings on concussions and symposiums and bring back stuff, so, um, it's where, um, the latest information that, uh, they brought back.
Yeah, so, I think that's the important, you know, introduction for the committee is that, and this is just updating our language to reflect the most current.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay.
So if you go to, uh, page fifty-three in your packet, um, number three, you'll see, um, just a wording to be more, um, consistent on what we're talking about, what we say, um, sustaining a load of the head, um, or body, um, that may cause a concussion. And that mechanism word, that's the criteria, um, that they're using. A few reasons to add to that, but just to make sure again that we're current with our standard of practice. And then the next highlighted area, concussion-like signs and/or symptoms, because not every student, um, presents the same way. And a concussion is not a concussion to a concussion, it's very individualized and then we need to take that into consideration. You'll see the other words, um, so, how we're documenting to the students, athletes, and what we're, we, we do, we don't just check, so, we do document their pulse respiration and blood pressure, and that's all recorded. Questions on three? Number four, um, we just added, um, for, and being consistent with our wording, um, so at home, um, practices, games, or events, so that if a concussion happens in any of those areas and arenas, it's the same protocol that we follow. So it doesn't have to just be a, a game or an event, it can be during practice, play got injured. And then again, who evaluates them and who's notified, so the athletic trainer and the student athlete. And then cleaned up our wording on that they may go home with his or her parents, guardians, or other adult who's verbally appointed, got a parent guardian. So that again, that there's no questions asked on how we, um, get kids safely home and monitor. B, again, we added, um, for an away practice, um, choose us to be consistent with up above, gaming event, um, and how they may go home. And again, in our away games, it's not our athletic trainer or our school physician, um, who, who gave. Um, but it's our athletic trainers that are, is at home, our home games, and then when we're in away games, it's their staff. So, um, making sure that we're clear on who's clearing our students. And again, the same wording about being appointed and who can take home. Good?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Uh, on page fifty-four, under C, um, the impact test, um, between twenty-eight, twenty-four and forty-eight hours. Uh, and then we just took out some wording and kinda cleaned it up. Um, and then the part about after a student athlete takes their first, um, post-injury test, that we're retesting in three days instead of three to five. Um, those, those were the new guidelines that, um, everyone's been hearing. And that the student, um, athlete will not be permitted to turn to play while they're, um, symptomatic, so that's non-individual. And then E, student athletes who continue to exhibit concussion symptoms for a week or more, or whose concussion symptoms cause significant academic disruption, must be evaluated by a physician before returning to play. And then the F, for being cleared by the medical provider, have impact test results that are back to their baseline, and be completely asymptomatic in order to move on or to function, um, or functional physical testing, or is the gradual return to play protocol, and that's the standard that we follow. Good? I know it's the first time you're saying.
Yeah, no, there's a couple things I could.
Okay. Yeah, and this is our first read, so feel free. So, um, and G, once a student athlete is asymptomatic, provides clearance for their healthcare provider and their post-injury test is back to their baseline score, student athlete will go through five days of progressive exertional post-concussion assessment, and is gradual return to play protocol. Student athlete must remain symptomatic during, for the twenty-four hours, and between all functional physical tests to return to play. So you'll see, um, what was, um, struck out is just to be consistent with our wording to here.
Just, Stacy, a, a, a question, um, because we had roughly fifty percent of the concussions in non-sports-related activities? Is that correct? Five in school?
Well, so it was thirteen sports teams and.
Right.
Five school-sponsored activities. Now, we don't tease out just for our stats, um, we're just, we're trying to capture our data.
Wait, I'm sorry, I thought you said thirteen classroom spot.
No, two classroom.
Two classroom. Two classroom.
Oh.
And then seven kids out of school, those don't really count as our stuff, so.
Okay, I guess the point of my question is, um, particularly when I'm reading here in regard to baseline. How do we baseline somewhat, 'cause the baseline relates only to sports.
So these students, so these are injuries, the school, I, I see where you're going, sorry.
Okay.
So if they're classroom or hallway, I know what we do, um, or school-sponsored like gym or an event or something, we refer them out and they're not allowed back without their return to play, concussion clearance, protocols, forms from the state, like from the doctor. So, and then they have to be re-cleared and this, so we get, it's the same, they follow the same protocol, but it comes from their primary ca- with, actually, they all come from their primary cares anyway. So it's the same, um, practice, but that's under school health and DPH regs. Because we, they do them when they're under the school nurse care. This policy and protocol is more for our sports teams.
Yeah. Okay.
So we don't technically have a concussion protocol for school health, but we do because I follow DPH guidelines, we all follow DPH guidelines.
For non. Okay.
We all refer out to their primary cares.
Alright, thank you for the clarification, that helps.
And it says.
There, there are a couple other things on here and, and I'll just preface it by saying that the, uh, current medical standards form is about to be updated. And it's, I'm not sure, it's one of those DPH things that takes two years to update once you start meeting about it. But, um, the, uh, the, one of the things that, you know, obviously we have to follow the, the recommendations, but we may wanna revisit the idea of doing impact testing right after, um, an injury, because a lot of kids just aren't ready, you know they're gonna fail. I mean, if a kid's got, if a kid's got a significant concussion, you, you know, you know, they may not even be back to school two or three days later. And so, um, that's just to, not to discuss now, but maybe we can just look at that. The other thing is, we may wanna slightly alter the language about return to play while symptomatic, because, um, there are some kids who have baseline symptoms all the time. Uh, for example, they, um, they have, uh, you know, little grade headaches, uh, which are stable and not felt to be, and they, uh, determine by the plan. So, um, some of that, the plan is symptomatic, it's changed to back to, to their baseline as determined by, you know, their physician. And then the other thing is, we may want to change it to the student athlete will go through five stages of, uh, post-concussion assessment, because sometimes you're not ready to progress from, um. Yeah, we try to run any concussion, and see, go on to the next stage.
Great.
On the days piece, I believe our fa- previous draft had said stages, and the wording was changed to days because of what the state had put out.
Yeah, no, that's exactly, so we have to do what they say.
So it's, we're still following DPH right now.
And believe me, when we sit at those meetings, this is exactly the kind of wordsmithing that they're going through. They're trying to get it right and they can't even all agree and there they have to, so.
So right now, Matt and Leslie and Joyce, we're following what DPH card copy stuff, and those are coming down.
Yeah.
So I honestly anticipate probably if they do do what they're supposed to do, um, we'll probably be back here next spring, um, when the new things come out for, 'cause they're shooting for school year nineteen twenty, so I think it might throw us off on our review if there's significant changes, so, thank you. And again, and, uh, Leslie and, um, Matt watch this all the time too. So, questions on, did I get through G?
You did.
Thank you.
Yes, for me.
The, uh, the section, I believe it's at F, I gotta swap over to it, no, I'm sorry, it's E. We talk about significant academic, uh, disruption, and then, you know, they have to refer the individuals to the primary care. I'm curious what are, where's the connection there? How, how are we ensuring that we have a, a student at a sporting event who gets the concussion protocol? How are we connecting them with the academic side to ensure they're being hooked up?
Great, so, students who are injured and come in with a concussion protocol for us to follow, guidance, their teachers, Joyce, Matt, and Leslie, um, communication goes out immediately and ongoing to update, um, students, and then we get a form from the physi- physician on what they're allowed to do. So whether it's no reading, no screen time, limited, where they're at, that's constantly reevaluated and constantly sent out in between Joyce and Leslie.
They get, and especially high school, what we use Power School or whatever, to make sure students have the information.
It's all, it's, it's a constant, we are never bored. Um, just thinking about if you have one or two students in your building that is suffering or in part of this concussion protocol, the constant follow-up monitoring, making sure, and then when you get into the high school, and even in elementary schools, 'cause they go to specialists, making sure everybody's on the same page, um.
And then the elementary schools for recess, to be, be teachers, um, specialists, so it's, it's an ongoing adventure. So, um, we do take that very seriously and things are dated and tracked and we do pay attention. Does that answer your question?
Can I answer your question, Jeff?
Absolutely, thank you.
You're welcome. So, three, um, sub-threshold exercise progression, um, these are all wordings that the stadium's having to, um, follow in the guidelines currently right now. Um, we'll do the whole paragraph, 'cause it's really large, um, lengthy, unless you need me to. But basically, until we get doctors clear it, um, we, um, follow whatever they're calling us. And then here's to the staging instead of testing, because that's what the new headlines set up.
When everybody went to the most recent conference, they said to change their wording to stages instead of.
Yeah, but I have a feeling it's gonna flip back. Um, so you'll see, that we, um, wrote that down into the stages and percentages. That make sense? Um, the next few days don't have changes, um, but.
Who's responsible, we can call.
We'll do all this, it's actually very lengthy, um.
C, so our next change, we're coming in, the change was thirty-six fifty-nine. And then, so.
Term in the wording for previous alteration in brain function has been resolved, because we speak to what Dr. Parkinson is saying, you know, you could have kids that have, have chronic headaches, chronic migraines, where their baseline is something for them, but it would be very different for someone else, and we just, we need to, we individualize these plans of care. Good?
Good.
Yep.
So that's, those are the changes, the first reading.
Any questions for Stacy, Dr. Parkinson, on the concussion policy?
No, ma'am.
I think the only. Except the updated concussion policy is first read?
Second. We have to go.
Okay, uh, first by George, I mean by Jeff, second by George, Don, question?
So, the only question I had is, a couple of the comments that, um, Dr. Parkinson has made here would reference us taking a look at the draft of the policy. It, it sounded like, um, was maybe s- some wording changes? This was, we're just going through?
Yeah. From my point of view, I don't wanna, it's, you know, it's, as I said, the wording, you talk to a hundred different people, you're gonna get two hundred different answers about how these things are worded, I think is part of the problem, because there are so many, like, details and intricacies. And I, I think if, if any of the things that I mentioned go against the DPH wording, then I would recommend sticking with what it said, if they don't, then those might be one, it would be worth, you know, after.
We switched them to these wordings following the DPH guidelines in the conference that, that we just went to and Joyce just went to.
Okay.
So they brought these back. Um, and then we went to health advisory and Joyce did a much better job, she's at the conference explaining, um, the changes. And then we went to health advisory and Joyce did a much better presentation at the conference explaining the changes.
Well, and your point is we'll probably be revisiting this in a year or anyway, so.
They're about to change again.
Yeah, I see.
They don't change our practice and what we do is, it's wording.
It does change the form, simplifies the form, so.
Okay, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, then I think we're ready for a vote on the first.
We don't have it start, I don't think.
Oh, okay, we don't need a motion. We don't need a motion, Jeff. I like how you tried to trip. I like how you tried to trip me up though. I think it was you and George.
I just followed Jeff.
Okay, all right, so, okay, so I think we're good. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Will this be on July first, I can read?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That would be. Thank you so much for coming.
Thanks, Stacy.
Thank you, nice meeting you.
Tracy Mashburn, thank you.
Okay, so the next item is about the November conference, the Mass, Mass Conference in Hyannis that we go to every year. It looks like we need to identify, if you know, you're definitely gonna go so we can get the early bird savings. Do you want us to tell you that now or do you want to wait?
If you don't choose to tell us now, you'll get an email from Gail, but we do need to.
Yeah, you can sign me up.
Yes, to Chris.
I'll be there.
Yes.
I should be there.
Jeff?
Orman, hold it in.
Yes?
I think I made a presentation, a tax presentation that week. I'm not positive, I'll check.
Okay.
Four yeses in one nutshell.
Hey, do we have to also verify or vote on a delegate? Is that true?
Voting delegate, yeah.
We, can we table that till?
Oh, absolutely. It doesn't have to be done now. I just think that's something to do pass.
Yeah, I think I, I was our delegate last year. I mean, I remember going to that meeting and voting on stuff. Okay, the next item is the retreat on August fourteenth.
So this was an opportunity for you to share thoughts that you might have before we get into the planning of it so that it becomes your retreat. Jeff and I had talked about it and so if you have ideas of what you'd like to see, let's just sort of have a little bit of a mini brainstorm session.
We have, what is it, a couple hours?
Yep, it can be any, anywhere you want.
Five thirty, we don't, we just know it's on the fourteenth, but do we have a time yet?
No.
What day of the week is that?
Well, I would say one thing, given the conversation about the school choice funds and stuff, it would be, I think we just would start to think about how we wanna utilize our funds, you know, bring ideas or thoughts about piloting new things or, you know, we can't keep telling the town that we're, we need to keep money in the bank to do stuff if we don't have plans for it. So that was one thing I think we could at least think about or bring some ideas on.
A strategic conversation, but not.
Specific deliberation.
Yeah.
What are we looking at for venue?
I like doing it at the store.
Can we have a nice new large room?
Seen it driving by.
It's nice.
So do we want to have it at the store?
Yeah.
Okay. Jeff, did you hear that?
I'm losing it.
To Jeff.
So you gotta get, we.
Are you supportive of us scheduling the retreat at the outreach site?
Go ahead, so.
Okay.
I have a front end.
And do we know what timeframe you'd like to see it?
I don't know, it felt a little rushed over dinner last year. Didn't feel like we had much time because we have to eat. That sort of eats up time. I mean, I would love to have dinner with you all, but, I mean, could we have our retreat and then go out to dinner?
I mean, if we had the retreat start a little bit earlier, we could actually go and have.
During the week, anything before four is gonna be tough for me. Our job is pretty unforgiving.
Well, we could still do an eating after kind of thing. If we did four to six thirty or four to seven.
Yeah.
Or maybe just bring the food in at the tail end or something like that.
It just felt like it kind of disrupted the flow of the meeting when we did that last time.
If we have like the last half hour and the last hour, that way we could come to your.
So are we looking at a four o'clock start or four thirty?
I mean, I can be there for four.
Okay, you can.
I can be there for four.
Does that work for anything? Yeah, I can do four. Can you do a four o'clock start, Jeff?
I may be a couple of minutes late, but I'm, I have a meeting and it ends at three thirty.
Okay. Let's at least shoot for that.
So four to six thirty, four to seven.
Do you want any, do you want any P on it? Through MASC?
I didn't get that question, Randy.
Do you want any professional development from MASC? Last year, remember, we did ethics.
I do.
Or from our attorneys.
I would rather keep it in-house, but that's just my, my request.
Yeah, maybe that's the other reason it felt like we didn't have a ton of time last year. Yeah. No, I think no. What do you think, John?
Yeah, there were reasons why we didn't last year, so maybe we don't need to go that route this year. Yeah. I just said there were reasons.
So can we shoot you some ideas? What's, what's sort of our timeframe? We probably have to have a final agenda by early August.
Yeah, I think it's in the next two weeks if you have a specific plot. That way maybe we can have a draft to share on July seventeenth.
And that's our next meeting that then everybody could take a little. Okay.
Okay.
So get your.
Except to you and.
Gail, I assume.
I'll try to have a draft to turn on July seventeenth. Next, the NSBA conference in Chicago, April next year.
Like, any thoughts on who might like to go to that?
I really like that conference.
Because we gotta stop having the problem of not finding hotel rooms close to the venue because we wait too long.
Yeah, yes, there's a early discount.
But the biggest thing is. Any of those national conferences, those hotels seem to. So any thoughts on who might like to go to that?
I would like to go. I don't, I can't say I'm a hundred percent committed, but I would like to.
Jeff?
I would like to go as well.
Okay.
I'm in the same mode as Colwell right now. Right now, my calendar's open, it doesn't get interrupted. Try to be much more firm before we have a deadline for paying for it.
Yeah, I would like to go. If you could come forward, what's definitely what the early deadline is. I mean, obviously there's, I think the sooner people are able to, like, book hotels, the better option.
Like to go? There's another commitment that I have to decide on that's coming up next year first.
So you're a maybe?
So, yes, please.
I would like to go.
And what will that do? Like not to throw out your other life. Is that a crunch time for you?
I just found advance, I can arrange it for two days. I can work around it. It's last year.
I'm rather short on meetings, it was just, plus last year was an absolute disaster anyway, so.
You're all complaining.
Okay, and then.
Institute, July ninth to the eleventh.
So I had asked Gail just to mainly, I don't know what she copied there for you, it seems pretty thick. But I mainly wanted you to be aware of the keynote speakers because those are in the auditorium and so the ability to sort of slide in, but there's some great keynote speakers. Hope could talk to that as well, but I just wanted you to be aware in case you wanted to go to any of them. So that's what you have in that packet. You actually have a full, it looks like a full packet, but.
Where is it?
The high school.
Oh, this is the one that's here?
Yes.
That's why I was asking when the work was going to be done.
No, not for that. But just to go back on what you approved for the elimination of the rest on the sidewalks, they are working on that. And I wouldn't say I'm overly pleased so far, but maybe they go back to doing what they're doing. Where they do it, it does seem to remove it. But I think they need to be, they need to get all the edges. So I'm not gonna, they're in the process of doing that, so I don't want to say that they're not gonna end up in the.
Do you, you've already seen it? Oh, we each have one. Oh, okay, I thought this, I had to pass it. Okay, thank you.
I have extras on the floor.
Okay.
And I just, on the NSBA twenty twenty, the registration doesn't even open until October seventh.
October seventh.
That's when it opens, so I would assume all of ours, yeah. Although I was a witness yesterday a while ago about submitting an abstract and I saw. Abstracts are already closed.
Yeah, I had worked on some stuff, I guess I didn't get it to you, but.
No.
I don't remember.
But it wasn't great. What I worked on anyway, so you're probably.
I wrote a lot.
After I fixed it, we would've gotten.
I wrote a lot this year.
Yeah, so maybe, you know.
I still caught it, so.
Yeah, let's just make sure we get on that because it's kind of, it's almost as like the current one wraps up and you need to be submitting an abstract for the next one. It's kind of a crazy timeline.
Yeah. Okay.
Could be a real better place. Should be south.
Yeah. Okay, we gotta get out of here on time. Outreach, so for your awareness, National Night Out on August sixth, Oktoberfest on October fifth and the Christmas parade. So we need to all get these on our calendars and.
So Patty sent out to everyone, right, a link to the Mashburn Public School Calendar?
So the district calendar has all of the events, is, is a shared calendar that you all have. You could, you can make it show up on your phone as well. So anything happening on any given day, you'd be able to see on your phone.
Yeah, I didn't have much success trying to make that happen.
Yeah, likewise, but I can claim that to technical incompetence.
Yeah, because I've.
Or hope, yeah, hope is quite agile.
Well, you can try it, but I.
Well, I'm just saying, I know how to get calendars to show up on my phone.
I just can't get that one. I have it selected, it just, nothing.
Even after we've recently shared it?
Yeah, maybe we shared it. Or maybe that was the problem. Here you go.
All right, you can do it.
The note taker.
All right.
Moving forward with any of these outreach events, it, it's going to evolve into, you just have to show up. Whenever you, the setup, the planning is not something that you all have to worry about similar to what we're doing for the community picnic. But as we get rolling and have a full team of event coverage, you, you just present yourself.
Yeah, I, I think the point is that we need to, just like we're divided up the committee assignments, we all need to make sure that we have coverage in all those events and that we don't all always need to be there for stuff coming up. But the idea that we're out there, I think we've done, we did a great job this last year, so.
Okay, anything that the chair did not reasonably know in advance?
Next agenda.
Anyone have anything? No public comment unless you have something to say?
Move to adjourn?
All right, I have a move to adjourn by George.
Actually, Jeff texted me his, so.
The chair can do.
Second by Chris. Any discussion? Okay, George, how do you vote?
Yes.
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 Yes.